Oh geez, that's a lot of people.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Forest Hills Local School District Board of Education, Monday, April 23rd, 2018. Mr. Jufrey, would you please call roll?
Mrs. Barber?
Here.
Ms. Choice?
Here.
Dr. Heiss?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
And Mr. Fruman.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You all, there is but one exit to this room. It's the same room door you came in. Head down either hallway for further exits, but that's the sole exit. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Jufrey?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
And Mr. Fruman?
Yes. Item 3, Approval of Minutes. Items 3.1 through 3.5.
Anybody have anything? Corrections, additions? If not, move that we approve all five of the minutes from previous meetings.
Second.
Mr. Jufrey?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
And Mr. Fruman?
Yes. Item 4.1, Correspondence. Mr. Prebles?
We did receive correspondence from the Ohio Association of Elementary School Administrators. We'll speak to that in a few minutes about the issues that came. And that was from K.T. Hughes-Crandle, who is the Communications and Project Manager. We have a guest with us this evening that the Ohio High School Administrator, the Association is going to announce winners of our Elementary Hall of Fame. So we have three schools that we will talk about this evening. And we also learned this past week that we have an Assistant Principal that will be named the Assistant Principal of the Year in the state of Ohio. So I will keep everybody at bay right now on who those people are and who those schools are. But that information did come to us from the Ohio Association of Elementary School Administrators. And we're very excited about that and happy that Julie Davis could be here with us this evening to give us those honors.
Thank you. Mr. Jufrey, anything?
No correspondence.
Board members, any correspondence? I will note, we've received considerable emails and correspondence on the Anderson High School branding and logo, and we've certainly read those. Item 4.2, Procedures for Public Commentary. This is, this meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for purpose of conducting the school's district's business is not considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda under public commentary. Individuals who would like to share their opinions or comments concerning a topic should list the agenda item or topic on a public participation sheet that's available at the front of the room, sign your name, include your address and telephone number, and give the sheet to one of the women up front. You'll be recognized during public commentary. Remarks should be addressed to the board as a group. Be within the indicated time limit. If several people wish to speak on the same topic, the time limit may be adjusted. Be prepared to respond to questions, although I do not anticipate any. Item 5.1. Where are our students?
We are happy to introduce the Wilson Elementary students to you. They will talk to us or give us a presentation on the Google Student Led Tech Conference.
Hello, I'm Angie Garber, Wilson's Learning Design Specialist. And along with Adam Samuels.
I'm Adam Samuels, Media Specialist at Wilson Elementary.
And for the past three years, Wilson has put on our Student Innovation Conference. And what it is, is our amazing students bring ideas to the table with technology and always to improve your life, stay organized, share your voice, make the world a better place. And often, our fifth and sixth graders are some of the students that we brought with us. They lead sessions from our kindergarten all the way up to our other sixth graders, teaching them, sharing with them, working side by side. There's a lot of collaboration and a lot of fun. So we asked these amazing students to come and do a brief presentation of which they shared with our first graders that day.
So we will be talking to you about Ozabots. Hello, I am Brooke Malone. I have been a Wildcat for seven years, and I have enjoyed every moment of it. I have two siblings. I have a sister who's in the first grade and a brother who's in the fifth. Here's my brother Caleb.
Hi, I'm Caleb Malone, and as my sister said, I'm in fifth and I have a little sister.
Hello, my name is Grace, and I have also been a Wildcat for seven years, and I have enjoyed my time here. I have three siblings that also attend Wilson. Two are in the third grade and one is in the fourth grade.
We are using the Ozabots to teach coding, which is a set of instructions for a robot that is unable to operate on soon. What are Ozabots anyway?
Well, Ozabots are these little tiny robots that can detect the colors red, green, blue, and black. You can code Ozabots by making paths with certain colors, color combinations. Also, what is super cool is you can make them do things like spin, zigzag, turbo,
So we are going to show you a few codes that you will get to experiment with. So we have zigzag, spin, turbo, and back walk. The black line is a path for the Ozobot to follow, but the colors are the actual codes. You have to make the color codes clear, short, and neat.
We have learned from trial and error that the colors should not touch but overlap, but should touch but not overlap. And if you make the color code really long, the Ozobot will not be able to read the code. So right now, we are passing out the colors red, green, blue, and black in a code sheet with a blank piece of paper, and you guys will be able to try out and make codes for the Ozobot to work with.
They're teaching us.
I'm nervous.
I'm glad I'm in the middle.
I'm not first, though.
As they're working through, the primary goal is just to kind of give them a beginning exposure to computer programming. So like they said very well, is basically everyone's being given a robot that doesn't function on its own, so they're having to create a set of instructions for the robot to follow, which really teaches the concept of what programming is at the heart of it. And then from there, learning how to create those instructions to make the robot do what it needs to. So kind of an example of this is how it applies into the classroom, because when you look at this, A, it's a valuable experience, because it's teaching a concept that's applicable to society nowadays. But then, B, how do we take this awesome technology and incorporate it in the classroom in a way that makes sense, right? So one example of this in our media center, in our Learning Commons space, students in first grade and second grade are learning more about story structure and how to create fairy tales as the context we use for it. So students are creating sets. They've written and organized their own stories based on how stories are structured. And then they are actually making Ozobot the main character in their story, to have to turn and move around in certain ways in their story to kind of act with the story that they've created. So in other words, you know, if a person is writing a story and an Ozobot is moving up to a bear and gets scared and needs to run away, they might use the turnaround code and then the turbo code. So they're, it kind of ties into comprehension also, because they're having to think deeply about what their story's all about. They're having to write through and kind of reread and think and process through their story. And then really apply actions that make sense, which when we think about robotics, the whole reason you're automating a process is to be able to achieve some sort of, or fix some sort of problem that needs to be solved, right? So by them taking that and kind of fitting it in with their Ozobot story that they're writing, it just kind of ties everything together and really makes it a rich learning
They're not really watching us do this, are they?
Yeah. So then, yeah, kind of the next step up after, with these Ozabots, kind of moving past the drawing with different colors to create your program, you can actually, there's a free software that we use where they can drag different blocks that have certain actions to control the Ozobot's speed, color direction. And from there, they could even take it a step further with these Ozobot EVOs that have color sensors, proximity sensors, and other things that they can manipulate. So it really kind of takes a nice sequential way to kind of dive into programming coding, get a taste of it at, you know, really early age.
I have no idea.
It works!
That's funny.
Lost my blacks. I brought your black.
Okay.
I've already lost a marker.
Am I doing it right? I don't think I'm doing it right.
Um, this is a bot. But it's.
How do I turn it on? Oh!
Code is it?
Oh, wow. How do you turn it on? There's your button. Oh, I need to hit the button.
Okay, so I do this, so maybe I do this. Then will it move if I do that?
Look at that!
Can I make a longer red one?
Okay.
Then what happens?
Which way is forward, this?
Um, yeah, so exactly.
Is the length of the line important?
The nice part is as students work through, there's a lot of troubleshooting, so like if a code doesn't work, they have to figure out is it because of my lines?
Is it this length?
Because of the order of my code, you know, things like that. So they have to really process through it with a partner.
Cool.
All right, what's this?
Okay, our kids are way smarter than we are. Okay, sorry.
That's all right.
I failed coding in college. It was so.
They had coding in college when you were there?
Aw, see.
Wow. I was told the PC thing's never gonna catch on. I should go into COBOL.
Try to get it in a continuous motion so it never stops.
Steve, I need help.
Thank you, so it actually works.
That's pretty cool.
This is a bot that's able to.
I don't know what I do with my.
Our kids are a lot smarter than we are.
That was good enough. Okay.
And we also have this.
Follow it.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. That's really cool.
I don't know where my marker is. All right. I'm only giving you back three markers. No, I don't know where the other one is.
When I was.
May I see another? Oh, maybe that might be one of them. Check one of those.
They put into a machine.
Give it a try. Oh, my goodness.
It acts like a telephone company in order to make the sounds for.
Try to get it so it just goes back.
Cool.
And whenever I'm given a presentation, one of the things I do is I hold up this strip that used to be at the base. It's a word, Excel, and I ask how many people remember.
Guess made it stop.
That tells me the age of the crowd.
His was better, I can see.
That is neat.
Very neat.
That's before the drop down menus.
Game over. I think I made him too long.
If you didn't have that, you were out of business. I still use those keystrokes.
So you do.
Keystrokes.
I have you sometimes, too. Max, Max, relax.
Uh-oh. What happened? It was doing. Oh, you need to.
So sometimes if it gets stuck or doesn't, like if the lines can be too thin and stuff, and the other sensor doesn't always pick it up, so.
Well.
Obsession.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Deep breaths. That works well. I didn't do so well.
So they usually make this face tool pretty interesting.
In the media center and in the classrooms.
And the Learning Commons. And so this is connected to the classroom, too?
Yes, the Learning Classroom.
Okay.
So what you see this evening is occurring in all of our schools, in our Learning Commonses with the utilization of Makerspace, and also it's connected with our classrooms and the literacy things that we're learning in the classroom. So these are ways to engage students in learning in different ways than we have in the past that excite them, to figure out early in life pathways that may have interest in them for science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, incorporating those across disciplines in the classroom, connecting their Learning Commonses to the classroom. And so what we saw this evening, or what we experienced up here, is going on on a daily basis. And the last time, a couple of months ago, the holders that are on the tables up here, so that the, what is that called? The table skirt, in our classes in the back here at Nagel, they designed clips for the sides of these tables that we were unable to purchase in the industry. And so our kids are working on real-life problems on a daily basis, and they're using the spaces that were so generously provided to us by our community. We're thankful for that, and we're also thankful for these students for bringing this presentation to us this evening. So thank you, guys, very much. We appreciate it.
I especially like it when the kids are able to show us up and show their soul smarter than us. Next up on our agenda, item 6, Commendations and Recognitions. Truly one of the best times of the year, and I always look forward to this. Mr. Prebles?
It is my pleasure to invite Dr. Julie Davis, the Executive Director of the OAESA, to start our presentations. Julie, welcome.
Well, good evening. Thank you, Board of Education members, Mr. Prebles, and guests. I really appreciate being here, and I am in my 11th year in this role. And I have to say, I've never had to follow Ozabots before. I didn't know what they were, but what a terrific, exciting thing. So indeed, it is my pleasure to be here to talk about the recognition program that our association has to recognize individuals as well as schools throughout the state of Ohio. OAESA serves about 2,000 pre-K through 8th grade administrators throughout our whole state. And we have a competitive process to award and to celebrate all, am I not on?
Nope.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Do I need to start over? You got it?
Oh, yeah.
Hi. Okay. So anyway, it's my privilege to be able to talk about some of the awards that we are going to be honoring and bestowing on individuals and schools throughout the state of Ohio. First of all, I'd like to talk about the Outstanding Assistant Principal Award. We offer the award, and we have a competition for an Assistant Principal in Ohio. But likewise, our National Association of Elementary School Administrators also works with us collaboratively to recognize one outstanding Assistant Principal every year in each state. To that end, we are committed to preparing Assistant Principals to step into the principal role. My executive team at OAESA and I had the privilege of working with all of your wonderful Assistant Principals right here on site in your district throughout last year. And both NAESP and the Ohio Association want to recognize and provide recognition for the exceptional leadership of the men and women who are responsible for and assist in all the day-to-day operations of pre-K 8th schools. We want to instill pride in their accomplishments and reinforce their role in helping children develop a lifelong love of learning. We want to impact them, and we want to prepare them for the role of the principal. As with all of our awards, nominations are accepted for candidates throughout the state of Ohio. The applicants must have been an active Assistant Principal for at least two years and contribute to the success of the educational community, contribute to a positive and motivating environment for others, and have a strong record of service in both school and community, and be recognized as a leader. The nominees complete extensive applications, which are read and then scored by an OAESA team of practicing administrators. Qualifying candidates were then interviewed by a team of administrators, and the finalists deserve a site visit by yet another, a third team of his or her colleagues. This recognition comes with major awards. Our Association provides a cash award to the winner, as well as a complimentary registration to the upcoming November Assistant Principal Conference in Columbus, where the winner will be recognized with his colleagues. Additionally, the awardee will be given a full registration to the National Association's Annual Conference this summer in Florida, and will be honored at the event. I'm so delighted to announce that this year's winner is one of your own. I understand that he is playing dad tonight in Home with Sick Kids, but I'm going to say his name anyway, and join me in celebrating Outstanding Assistant Principal from the state of Ohio is your own Brian Lyons. And I certainly know that being an Assistant Principal and a principal, it's part of a team. So Bob, I'm going to ask you, as the principal of your school, if Bob Buck would please come up and accept this for Brian and give it to him tomorrow. He'll get his major award at our conference in June. So Bob, thank you. This is a certificate for Brian from us and a certificate from the NAESP as well. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. All right. Well, I'm not done yet, because your school has been very well represented. All of this is done anonymously, and I have nothing to do with it, but I kept seeing the scores coming in, and we had more nominations for the various awards than we ever have. As I already said, I'm in my 11th year. So first of all, I'd like to tell you a brief little bit about what we call our Hall of Fame Awards. They're for a school, and they are awarded to the whole school community and are written by the principal and a team of the school as probably community partners, as well as district employees as well. We want to recognize elementary and middle-level schools that go above and beyond. This year, as I mentioned, many schools were nominated, so it was very competitive. We only select up to 11 every year, and they can be anywhere throughout the state. Once nominated, application packets were sent to the nominated schools, and they were completed by the stakeholders at the site. After the applications are submitted, they are read by a team, another team, and at least three team members read the recognition service team. They read the application without knowing who submitted it, so it's in the blind. They are scored by readers using a rubric, and then those scores are averaged. And in order to qualify for the next round of judging, which is an onsite visitation, the average score must be 75 points or more. Schools receiving a qualifying score are then visited by a different team of principals that validate and score the evidence presented in the application. They want to make sure that you're walking the talk, walking what you wrote. The combined reader and visitor scores are ranked ordered to determine the top 11 schools each year. I'm delighted and pleased to tell you that Forest Hills has three, three Hall of Fame schools this year. And rather than drive down here four times to recognize the AP and the three schools, I thought we'd do it all at once, so. Anyway, first of all, when I call the name of the school with the principal and the Assistant Principal, please come up and call, if Assistant Principal is here. First of all, I'd like Todd Hartman, Principal, and also Heather Hill, Assistant Principal of Ayers Elementary, to join me. Well, as I said, you'll get a major award at our awards luncheon at our conference in June in Columbus. But thank you and congratulations. Well done, well done. Let me give you this, and I'm going to read a few comments that either the readers, the team of readers, or the visitors said when they visited your school. This year, that Ayers Elementary, the whole community shines with school spirit. This is a school that embraces progressive ideas with much evidence of student leadership, innovation, technology, and choice. Ayers is a highly engaging environment for students with an emphasis on growing the whole child and providing opportunities for leadership, self-evaluation, student-initiated activities. Aided by a supportive community and an involved PTA, it's clear to see why Ayers Elementary is a Hall of Fame school. Congratulations, Todd and Heather. And likewise, just like Mr. Lyons will receive a check, the Hall of Fame schools each receive a check for $1,000 to be used as the principal's discretion for something in the school site. Our next winner from your district is Maddox Elementary. I'd like to have. I'd like to have Stephen Toler, Principal, and Erin Storey, Assistant Principal of Maddox Elementary, join us up here. Congratulations. Okay. I'd like to ask Stephen Trailer. Thank you. All right. It only takes a moment inside Maddox Elementary to see their mission to empower each student to achieve personal success every day in action. The students, the staff, administration, parents, and community members are all working together to provide the very best opportunities for student success, both in and out of the classroom. They are tending to academic, social, emotional, and behavioral needs of all students. The students have ownership of their learning and are proud of their school. District Administrator Administration described Maddox as a place where it is safe for staff and students to take risk and for teachers that are hungry to learn. Staff members actually got teary-eyed when talking about their school family. We all take care of each other. There's a lot of emotional support, showing children how to deal with problems and issues. Maddox Principal, Steve Trailer, also choked up, as he shared with us, "I love my staff," and gave us many examples of some of the wonderful ways being part of the Maddox family has touched lives. Congratulations, Maddox Elementary, on receiving this well-deserved recognition. And I'm not quite done. This is our last award, and it goes to Mercer Elementary. I would like to invite Jody Davidson and Joy O'Brien. Jody's the principal and. Mercer places tremendous emphasis on student involvement, as the staff meets the needs of a diverse learning community. Everyone works as a collaborative team in all aspects of the planning and implementation of the building. The work ethic is strong, teachers take on leadership responsibilities, and everyone owns all the kids. "They're our kids," was the quote. Students are involved in a variety of activities and are proud to talk about their school. Mercer is a positive, engaging school for their students and well-deserving of our Hall of Fame designation. Congratulations, Jody, Joy, and team. As I mentioned, I'm delighted to be able to present their awards at our Hall of Fame Luncheon, and I know that some of your district leadership and school staff will also be able to join us in June. So thank you again for this opportunity. Congratulations to all the winners. Thank you, Mr. Preble.
You're welcome. Good to see you.
Before we move on, I think officially, we want to make some commendations. So on item 6.1, can we have a motion?
I make a motion to commend Brian Lyons for his achievement and distinction, and a certificate of commendation be presented to him.
Second. Mr. Jufrey?
Which second am I taking?
Take Elizabeth.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Fruman?
Yes. And then item 6.2?
I'll make a motion to commend Ayers, Maddox, and Mercer Elementaries for their achievement and distinction.
Second.
Mr. Jufrey?
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Fruman?
Yes. And item 6.3, Mr. Prebles?
Anderson Area Chamber of Commerce Student of the Year recognition for 2018. On April 18th, 2018, the Anderson Area Chamber of Commerce held their annual awards banquet and selected their Student of the Year. The recipient of this award for the Forest Hills School District is Keegan King from Turpin High School. Keegan, are you with us this evening? I also attended the dinner the other evening presented by the chamber. We want to thank the chamber for their association with our schools and for helping us honor our great student body. And Keegan is certainly a student who deserves this award and this accolade and we are very thankful that he could be there that evening and wish him the best in all that he does. So congratulation, Keegan.
Yes, can we have a motion?
Yes. I'll make a motion to commend Keegan King for his achievement, is that the right one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. To commend Keegan King for his achievement and distinction and a certificate of commendation be presented to him.
Second.
Mr. Giuffre?
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Fruman?
Yes. Item 6.4, Anderson Area Chamber of Commerce Educator of the Year recognition for 2018.
Also on April 18th, 2018, the Anderson Area Chamber of Commerce held their annual awards banquet, again, and selected their educator of the year. The recipient of this award for Forest Hills School District is Linda Lagaman from Wilson Elementary. Linda, if you could please come forward.
So before she leaves, I was also honored to step into Linda's classroom, surprise her with this great honor presented by the chamber. And in the application process, Bob, principal, and staff there who wrote about Linda spoke so well of her engagement with students, her caring environment that she creates in her classroom, and the joy she has of teaching and the joy that her students have in her being their teacher. We also heard that her staff, the staff that she gets to work with on her team and at the grade level certainly appreciate her leadership and the joy that she brings to the building. And so we're very honored and very happy for you, Linda, for this great award and congratulations again, not only from the chamber, but from the Administration Board of Education for Forest Hills. Congratulations.
Congratulations again.
I'll make a motion to commend Linda Lagaman for her achievement and distinction and a certificate of commendation be presented to her.
Second.
Mr. Giuffre?
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Fruman?
Yes. Item 6.5, Hamilton County Education Foundation, Celebrate Excellence Educator Recognition 2018.
The Hamilton County Education Foundation has a Celebrate Excellence Educator Recognition that they provide each year. And this particular school year, the honoree is Mindy Trujillo. Mindy, are you with us this evening? I also got to surprise Mindy in her classroom at Turpin High School. We went into her classroom where her students were just as excited, they weren't as surprised, but they were just as excited as Mindy was for earning this award and this award, the Celebrate Excellence Educator Recognition Award. Mindy is known in the building as being a team player, someone whose classroom is exciting and engaging for the students in which she teaches. She was very excited and very honored on that day and was very quick to line up with her students to take a picture with them, which speaks highly of her consideration and concern for her students and her joy that she brings to the classroom. So we're very excited for Mindy and there will be a celebratory breakfast coming up in May. On May 11th, we will attend at Princeton High School and she and her family members will be part of the entire county's celebration of excellence on that day. So congratulations again to Mindy for all of her work.
I'll make a motion to commend Mindy Trujillo for her achievement and distinction and a certificate of commendation to be presented to her.
Second.
Mr. Giuffre?
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes. Item 6.6, PBIS Awards. Ms. Ryan?
Before we commend these four buildings for their achievements in PBIS, I just wanted to give a brief overview of the great work that's being done district-wide around PBIS. PBIS stands for Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. It follows the same principles that we're implementing district-wide within our response to intervention or RTI model. It's now called Multi-Tierred Systems of Supports, or MTSS. PBIS is the behavioral portion of this model to achieve combined social, emotional, and academic success. Similar to what we are doing assessing our students for academic challenges and targeting skill deficits through tiered interventions, we're also systematically addressing our buildings by reviewing building data, identifying problematic behaviors as a whole, designing building-wide expectations and instructions to support a positive culture and environment. The framework is built upon three tiers of intervention to address the building as a whole. Tier one in small groups, which is tier two, and for individual students, tier three. All of our nine buildings have developed building-wide teams. They've participated in formal trainings with our state support team and have begun implementation. As part of these efforts, these buildings have applied and received recognition now for their practices in the implementation of PBIS. Award-level schools have identifiable characteristics for team-based planning, they have high levels of administrative involvement, they systematically collect data using a problem-solving process, and have identified at least three behavioral expectations or building-wide expectations within the school to enhance their school climate. These four buildings are examples of the positive attention received at the state level for implementing positive behavior intervention supports. Wilson Elementary has been deemed a gold-level accomplished school for meeting all of the characteristics for the three tiers that I mentioned earlier. Turpin has been recognized at the silver level and Sherwood and Mercer have been recognized as bronze-level schools with tier-one implementation steps in place. So wonderful accomplishments for these four buildings. I'm now going to ask, I was going to ask everyone to come up, but that would be a little overwhelming. So I'm going to ask our principals to introduce their teams one at a time and share information, if they would like, on how they achieve those awards. Let's start with Wilson Elementary and Bob Buck and his team.
Part of the Wilson team is Jean Bode, our counselor, sixth-grade teacher, Tricia Hauserman, intervention specialist, Brian Prophet, kindergarten teacher, Ally Bond, and third-grade teacher, Chris Francus. Our team meets about every three to four weeks and we talk about data, what's going on in the school around behaviors, and we focus in on the positive, not the negative. So that's what we do and we follow the Wilson way every day, taking care of ourselves, taking care of others, and taking care of our wonderful Wilson School.
Mr. Spencer?
They're worried. Good answer. They're thinking of ways of providing positive incentives for us. Again, my name's Dave Spencer, principal of Turpin. We have a team as well, made up of our school psychologist and assistant principal, some intervention specialists, and some teachers from different areas who meet on a regular basis and, as Bob said, really focus on the positive sides of behavior, trying to provide incentives to encourage that behavior. We have four core expectations: be respectful, responsible, proactive, and safe. We try to teach that to all of our kids on a daily basis, try to implement it in the classroom. We make sure our students understand the expectations no matter where they're at in the building, whether it's the cafeteria, the hallway, the bathroom, the classroom, and try to preach a consistent message to them. And again, we try to recognize those positive behaviors through many different ways and it's just not focusing on the kids that often make poor decisions, but it's focusing on all of our students and, again, taking the time to recognize the great things that they do on a daily basis.
Our PBIS committee is led by Joy O'Brien, our assistant principal, and I'll let her share some of that information.
Hi, guys. So like my colleagues before me, we are made up of a team. Some of our team members are here tonight. This is Brooke Boselman. She is a first-grade teacher. This is Carrie Kelly. She's one of our reading specialists. Gigi Notton, our school counselor, and Melissa Oakley, a second-grade teacher. And we meet monthly to take a look at where in the building maybe our students need a little challenge. Sometimes cafeteria's starting to get a little messy, we need a little cafeteria challenge and it seems like the kids are motivated by anything that they can compete against one another and it's always a fun, friendly competition to see how many of those blue golden eagle tickets that you can get and what you can cash those in for. So we really appreciate what PBIS has done at Mercer. That clear, consistent message to kids is so important and they really thrive on that structure. So thank you.
And Ayr Elementary.
I'm grateful to be joined here by members of our PBIS team, Joni Overcast, Katie Holt, and Heather Holly. We meet monthly as well. Our system is called AIRCARES because we care about everyone at our school. We practice being respectful, responsible, and safe with AIRCARES. And in our building, if you walk in, you can see all kinds of posters and beautiful signage that's throughout our building with expectations and reminders for our kids. But what I want to point out is just those reminders by themselves as good as they look, that is not at all what our system is about. What we love about our system is how it has transformed the way that we can use common positive language with our kids and how we can support them in all areas of our school. It's transformed how we teach and reteach expectations to help kids be successful. So when we meet, we talk about what behaviors do we want to make sure we positively recognize with our kids and where are their challenges? Like Joy mentioned, where are their challenges that we can help support our kids with? And especially this year, we've seen more and more student ownership with our PBIS system, which is just awesome. We love that. So we have a sixth-grade group and a fifth-grade group that meets every other week for lunch together and we talk about different initiatives they want to develop within our school. And we have students working with Joni to make videos, to teach other kids. So we love not only the system and how it was implemented, but also how our kids are really taking it and running with it. So we're very grateful for the chance to be here tonight and share some of that with you. Thank you.
Can I give an extra pat on the back to this AIR team? Some in the room might know, the AIR community lost a student last year and Mrs. Holt was her teacher. My daughter was in the class. And the way that this program works and teaches kids to be compassionate and have empathy, I really believe it helped these kids deal with this. And so I just want an extra thank you because I saw it firsthand. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to commend AIR, Mercer, Turpin, and Wilson for their achievements.
Second.
Mr. Giuffre?
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes. Next up, item 6.7, volunteer recognitions. We have the absolute best volunteers anywhere in the country and we're going to recognize them tonight. Mr. Prebles, you going to lead us off or should we start with Anderson High School? And I just call it Mr. Fellows.
Yes, sir, Anderson High School.
Anderson High School and Mr. Fellows.
Well, I was asked to keep it to eight words or less by this person right here. And I can tell you, it has been quite a year at Anderson High School and one of my fondest memories and probably the thing that I look back on, I will look back on in the years to come, is the amazing outpouring of love and support that our parent community has offered our students here at Anderson. It's been truly amazing to see and I think that I would be surprised if anyone in the room disagreed with me about how critical it is, the relationships that we form with one another. And it speaks volumes. I think that to be successful in life, it's very difficult to reach a level of success in however you define success without acknowledging the importance of truly caring about the other and serving one another and doing so with a pure heart and good intent. And I'm pleased to have this woman standing here next to me. Her name is Robin Rothfuss. She's our PTO president and she is probably in her mind just cursing me because she does not want to be standing up here. But I will tell you that she represents a whole host of parents behind her, which is probably what she would be saying, is that she's not the one doing all of the work. There are a lot of people that do a ton of great things at Anderson High School and she is in a position of leadership this year and I have been more happy to work alongside her. Her personality is just so easy to get along with. The initiatives that she champions, they happen, they come to fruition because of her tireless devotion to those projects and because of the relationships that she forms with teachers, with other parents in the community. And it's just a huge testimony to who she is. So I could list a lot of the different things that she did or that she has done. And aside from wanting to change the bylaws in our PTO constitution to keep her on for about six more years, I would just say that one of the things that is most remarkable about her is just Robin being Robin, being incredibly hardworking, dedicated, passionate to doing what's best for kids. And that's ultimately what everybody up here is about. And that's why I'm pleased on behalf of the staff and students at Anderson High School to recognize Robin Rothfuss for this great award.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Spencer from Turpin. Robin?
You got to come back and give your hands up. Julie, come on up. I would like to agree with what Mr. Fruman said. This is a great night and one of my favorite nights of the year that we have an opportunity to recognize an outstanding volunteer. And as Mr. Fellows said, it takes many parents that are dedicated devoted not only to their child, to the students of our schools, because we would not be able to do what we do without individuals like Julie that are free to give up their time and their talents in so many different ways. Julie Williams is the recipient of the Volunteer of the Year Award for Turpin High School. Julie's a pretty amazing lady. I like to say she has three full-time jobs. The first job, which is probably her number one priority, is that of a parent. She has two at Turpin, Casey, a senior, and Kaylee, who's a sophomore, who are very involved at Turpin. So we see her face, Julie's face, quite often just at their events. She also has a career. She worked for Ralph Lauren and it's a job that takes her on the road quite a bit, so she travels often. And the third job, which is what has got her up here in front of us, is the time she volunteer. volunteers at Turpin. She is our Athletic Booster President. She has been an integral part of a facility upgrade and renovation plan with the first phase hopefully kicking off this summer. That will be absolutely a needed thing for us to have at Turpin. Without her, I'm not sure this would happen. She also was a large contributor to our Spartan Rama, which raised over $30,000 this year for our athletic department. Very tremendous thing there. And the other thing is, we've been in need for a long time for a spirit shop. And it's one of those things, if you build it, they will come. Well, we have this small triangular room that probably is not any bigger than some of your closets at home, that Julie completely has transformed. She's been the driving force behind it. She designed it. She's got the inventory for it. She's manned it. And if you walk by the front of it, it beats any storefront you may see walking down any major street where there's department stores and shops and stuff. Just an incredible job. And apparently, she's quite the salesman. We had a situation, a ballgame this year, where she sold over $300 worth of apparel to students. Now, you're gonna say, $300, that's pretty good. But the catch is, it was $300 at a ballgame to the Kings High School cheerleading team. So we got a bunch of Kings cheerleaders wearing a lot of Turpin gear. So that alone is pretty amazing to me. But I appreciate Julie and all the time that you have spent at Turpin and all the things you have done, and we couldn't do without you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Mr. Hartman. AIR Elementary.
Why are we here? We're here for our kids. That's why we're here. Each thing that we do each day is to help our kids. And the reason I'm so thrilled to get to welcome our guest here tonight representing AIR is because she gets that. Jody Benning is here with us, and on behalf of our school, all of our staff, and Ms. Holly, I'm so excited to get to welcome her here and to show her some appreciation. So at the start of the year, we had kindergartners and first graders eating lunch together at the cafeteria at the same time. Is that sinking in? At the same... Right. Jody and I have a connection here. At the same time, kids eating lunch, five-year-olds, six-year-olds who never have eaten lunch at school before. And Jody showed up, and she volunteered to help with that. That alone is enough for an award. Right here. There's more. She's also a publicity chair for our PTA. She answers countless calls for questions, people who need help for things like class parties and special events. She's a VIE extraordinaire. If you're not familiar with that program, VIE at AIR stands for Volunteers in Education. She's our Festival Food Committee Chair, Global Adventure Day Kindergarten Coordinator. She's a Walkathon volunteer, and she's the donation queen of AIR Festival and the Falcon Hoopla. So those are some things that Ms. Holly and I could share, but we have a tradition we're developing with this award at AIR that I enjoy. We ask the kids and the teachers, what do they think of our award recipients? So as one teacher put it, "She has single-handedly transformed our AIR Festival with raffles. She's uber-organized, a planner, and always has things all put together." One student said, "The festivals and stuff she does are great. I like how she sets up the raffles." Another said, "She cares about others. We made up this dance called the Funky Chicken, and she does that with us." I'm hoping afterwards... Funky Chicken lessons, maybe. She helps getting our papers for math scan and our ELA stuff ready. She's always smiling. I've known her since preschool. She's always kind and always funny. Her son, one of our second graders, said, "She has lots of..." First grader, so of course, I'm trying to accelerate him already. "She has lots of jobs and she's very smart. She also does karaoke." So Funky Chicken and the karaoke, it's gonna be fun. And then her daughter, who's a fifth grader, said, "She helps out with the festivals and Walkathon in classrooms." She's just really good. It makes me feel happy and proud. I love her a lot, 100%. So with all that appreciation, we are so grateful for all that you do, Jody, and we appreciate you so much. It is our pleasure, on behalf of our entire school, to give you this certificate of commendation. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you so much, Jody.
Mr. Trailer, sir. Maddox Elementary.
So there's been a lot of time talking about some of the accolades of the school district. And the foundation of our success is our ability to make relationships with our kids and our parents and have that partnership where we're working together to support our kids. Kim has been at Maddox for seven years, and she's held just about every position, as I'm sure most of the people here have. What I think is really unique about Kim is her heart allows her to be both the worker bee and the leader bee. So when she needs to, to be the chair or the co-chair, she steps up. She can organize. She can get people to volunteer and motivate them. But when she needs to be, she'll also take that backseat and just sit there side by side, working with the students in the library or working with them in a classroom and helping them. And it's that unique ability of her to be able to make those connections with both the adults and, most importantly, the kids in the building that make her a truly, truly special person. There are lots of parents that come through the building. There are lots of people who volunteer, and every once in a while, you get to call them a friend. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Davidson from Mercer Elementary.
Don't make me cry.
It's my pleasure to introduce Diana Ellis. Diana has served Mercer for six years, running our yearbook committee. Essentially, she's the photographer, the head of the committee. She organizes all of the pages. And if you have not seen the Mercer yearbook, it is phenomenal. This year's yearbook, she took it upon herself to try something very new. So she purchased a green screen, felt, decorated the entire hallway and the floor, and has placed every one of our classes and our staff members around the world. So I believe that the office staff is in Palestine, I believe, and there are people who are in Argentina, and it is phenomenal. And we really look forward to seeing this yearbook come to fruition and be in hard copy. As she ends this year, she had originally said that she wasn't coming back next year because her son is moving on. But she's a little nervous about handing it over, so I'm super excited to say that she's going to come back and join us next year. So please help me in commending Diana Ellis.
Congratulations. Thank you. Wow. Thank you so much, Diana. Mr. Vandemere from Nagel.
Thank you.
So unfortunately, our recipient couldn't be here this evening, Matt Robinson. But he adds a really unique spin to this evening because I've worked with Matt for the last 10 years, and he does not have any children in the school district. Matt is just a community member. In his big-boy job now, he is something like Communications Relation Director at Parkside Christian Church. Back in the day, when Matt and I started working together 10 years ago, he was the youth pastor at Parkside. And he came to me one day, and he said, "I want to work with middle school kids." And he said this. He said, "I am not interested in building my youth group or getting people to come to church through the work that I want to do with your kids. I just love kids." And for the last 10 years, Matt Robinson has made a tremendous difference in the lives of kids. The biggest things that I can highlight, there's many, many things he can do. Over the last 10 years, we have fed over 250,000 children with our food packing events with Nagel Middle School and the community. Last year, we built two houses, built the walls for two houses that Matt spearheaded with our community and Nagel Middle School. He and I had the opportunity to watch a family walk in the doors with their kids of a house that was built for them, and the walls were built by this community in Nagel Middle School. We will do that again this Saturday. So if you're looking for something to do Saturday, come build some walls with us. Matt is truly the community part of what we have to do, and that is parents, school, and community. And Matt Robinson is that type of person of a community who just loves kids and wants to make a difference in their lives. So Matt Robinson is our recipient from Nagel Middle School.
Mr. Hamilton, please, from Sherwood Elementary.
All right. Good evening, Board, and all of our guests and award winners. We have some very talented people in this district, a lot of people. So hopefully, I'm gonna continue the tradition here. I have a very talented person in her own right to celebrate tonight, and that is Mrs. Amy Overby. So Sherwood would like to recognize Amy as our 2018 Volunteer of the Year. I'd also like to quickly stop because she did bring two of her three girls. We have Kate, Mary, and then Mike is also here, her husband. So thanks for letting us have Amy throughout the course of the year. Amy is, I would say, she disagrees with me. I said four or five days a week, she's at the building. She said, "Not that much." It's that much. She's with us four or five days a week. I know that for a fact. But I am truly honored to be standing with you today. Amy is one of the nicest, kindest human beings on this planet. Those of you who know her out there know that for a fact, if you've had any opportunity to interact with her. I always like to find a quote that kind of sums up who this person is. And so the quote that I found says, "How beautiful a day can be when kindness touches it." And Amy is that kindness that walks into our building every day, and she truly makes a lot of the days beautiful when she walks in for our kids and our staff and just everybody in general. So thank you so very much for that. Most of the staff, when I talk with them, she is in and out of every classroom, and the first thing they said is, she puts a smile on my face every single day that she comes in. She's a very unassuming person, but her heart is bigger than her. And so, like I said, if you know her, you understand what I'm talking about. So the volunteering, what has she done? She's done a few things this year. She is a member of our PTA board. She is our Library Volunteer Chair, which, those of you who know the Media Center, you gotta have volunteers to help make that run. She's in charge of that. Another big task, she was our Carnival co-chair, which that in and of itself is huge to take on. She's involved with our sixth grade Activities Committee. She volunteers in all three of her kids' classrooms. She's also a library volunteer, and, as Mrs. Ryan spoke about earlier, she is our parent rep on our PBIS committee. So what better person to have on a committee about kindness and creating positive behaviors than Amy? She's perfect for that. But I want to close, I did ask a few people that know her really well about who she is as a volunteer and what they thought, and that was her three children. And so they gave me a few quotes here. I asked them, I said, "Tell me about your mom's volunteering. What do you think?" And they said, "Well, I appreciate that she helps our school and our community." And another said, "I always get to see her every day, and that makes me smile." And then I asked them, "So why do you think she volunteers as much as she does?" And they said, "She loves us and wants to be there for us and to be a part of our education." So I think that speaks volumes. So thanks for loving your kids as much as you do in loving the other 615 in Sherwood every day. So please help me to welcome them.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Michelle Solstead from Summit Elementary.
Melissa.
Oh, I'm sorry. Melissa Buckaloo.
Thank you. It is a great honor to be here and a privilege to announce our Summit Volunteer of the Year, Mrs. Erin Horsley. Erin currently serves as Summit PTA President and has been a key member in our organization for many years. The youngest of her two sons, Nick Horsley, attends second grade at Summit, and we're thrilled to have the opportunity to retain and work with Erin for many years to come. People volunteer for many reasons. Some for to give back, others to make a difference, for others, it might be to develop new skills or build on existing experiences and knowledge. For Erin, volunteering is a calling. Today, we shine a light on Erin Horsley for hearing this call to action, giving freely and abundantly her time to continue to make Summit a school where community partnerships are powerful. It is through the eyes of those impacted I share our gratitude for her service. Mrs. Biding, first grade teacher, shares, "In the last two years, every event for students has been organized down to the smallest of details. Erin was often seen dashing into Summit early in the morning before heading to her full-time job to handle something PTA-related on the benefit for students. Supporting staff was a hallmark of her tenure. She ensured that mini-grants for teachers, field trips, and enrichment activities for students were generously funded, with students at the heart of every opportunity at Summit. Her son, Nick, was asked why he loves having his mom volunteer to be the PTA President and volunteer in our school. He said..." She's like, "I'm afraid." She said, "I love hav..." He said, "Sorry." "I love having my mom as the PTA President because she helps with great stuff like Summit and getting testing ice cream treats for us at our school." Highly important, yes. Also, I get to go to the PTA meetings. He enjoys those. Erin, thank you for your dedication to Summit. Your brilliance, balance, and unwavering belief in the work of volunteering is not unnoticed. We appreciate everything you do for us. Thank you.
Congratulations. And thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Buck, please, from Wilson Elementary.
Good evening. I have the honor to introduce you to Jessica Beavers. When you think of Jessica, you think of basically the word of volunteering, and it's to provide support without material or financial gain. And we hope that it's not with financial gain because she's been our PTA treasurer for two years. Jessica takes on a lot and really sees the vision of kids. And whatever the kids want, she tries her hardest to get that. And we're very lucky that Jessica, along with other PTA members and volunteers, have installed turf at Wilson this past year. And Rob, as you know, paying bills on time is very important, and she is all over it and is definitely an expert at Excel and her QuickBooks. When I asked her two children today, Tyler in fifth grade and Ashley in fourth, about their mom and volunteer, and they stated, "We really like seeing mom around the school, and we always know before any other kid what's going on." Wilson Elementary would not be the same without Jessica, and we appreciate her dedication to the Wildcats.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Mr. Fruman and Dr. Heiss, I'd like to recommend, the board commend, these volunteers for their dedication and service to the students of Forest Hills with the certificate of commendation which has been presented to each of them.
I make a motion to commend the volunteers for their dedication and service to the students of Forest Hills, and a certificate of commendation be presented to each of them.
Second?
Mr. Jufrey?
Ms. Joyce?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes. And I think we ought to give him one more very large one. of Forest Hills, and a certificate of commendation be presented to each of them.
Second?
Mr. Jifrey.
Ms. Joyce?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes. And I think we ought to give him one more very large one.
Mr. Fruman, before we leave, commendations, may I? Absolutely. In my role with Ohio School Board Association, I trail around the state a lot. Matter of fact, I just finished participating at seven different regional conferences. And after talking with board members around the state and hearing about what some of their challenges and issues are, it just makes me appreciate what goes on in Forest Hills. Those folks can't dream of what we have here in Forest Hills. They wish they had our problems. It's just, like I said, rewarding to come back and see three out of 11 schools recognized in the state coming from this school district. I think we come to expect that. It's commonplace. We're almost numb to it. We expect it. And, but it's really still special. And, like I said, these school districts only wish they had the administration, the staff, the teachers, the parent volunteers that they couldn't imagine having, and the students. So we are so very, very fortunate here in Forest Hills. I just wanted to take a moment and reflect on that, because, like I said, we see this month in and month out. And again, I don't mean to make light of some of my fellow board members' issues around the state, but we are so very fortunate here. And again, I just want to thank all those people who work so hard to make Forest Hills an absolutely great school district. So, anyway, that's my two cents worth.
All right. Next up is public commentary. Do we have any others? If I counted right, we've got 14. I want to try to keep public commentary. Oh, and please, run. Our volunteers, you don't have to stay. You're welcome to, but it's not necessary. So we're going to limit discussion to two minutes per person. Will you be able to time that for me? It will be very strictly enforced. I apologize now if I interrupt people. It's not my intent to be rude. It's merely my intent to make sure we move this forward so we can get the rest of the business of the Board of Education completed. I will stop whoever it is at two minutes, regardless of who you are, what you're talking about. Please respect each other in that regard. Also, it's only two minutes, so be kind to each other and allow people to have their say. Don't interrupt. Don't shout out with either approval or disapproval. Allow people to get through what it is they have to say. We have actually speakers on a number of different issues, and so what I'm going to do is take those issues in order. I have one, I'm not sure what the issue is, it's just filled out. So if you, Mr. Lotterell, can you tell me what it is you're speaking on, so I know what pile to put you in? You're not first, I just need to know where you're speaking on. You're not first, I just need to know your topic. What are you, what's your topic, so I know what place to put you in the pile?
What do you ask?
I'm asking, what's your topic? What do you, we have other things. The logo and nickname are not the only thing people want to speak about.
What are you speaking?
Is that what you're speaking on?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I needed to know. I know which stack you go in there. Thank you. All right. First up, Rochelle Lacander. And Mr. and Ms. Lacander, before you come up here, I, we've spoken before, or I know you've spoken to the district before, I'm going to ask you, keep your comments general. I don't expect you to be pointing out any individuals, any teachers, certainly not students. Ms. Lacander, you'll have two minutes. Are you here?
On March 7th, my daughter was attacked in Nagel Middle School, period. I asked several times how you're going to keep my daughter safe. It took me weeks of getting to a meeting at the administration building. At that time, my husband announced that I have a disability, and someone stated they didn't need a psychologist or specialist to tell him that something was wrong with his wife. And he said, "My emails were unintelligible to read." I came to this meeting on March 20th to ask the Forest Hills School District, "How are you going to keep my daughter safe, because she's been out of school for over a week? She was attacked by another girl, made a police report." By the end of that meeting, when I left, my husband literally picked me up off the floor of the administration building and carried me out to the car. I felt like I was intimidated, bullied, and broken down. So since someone said they didn't need a psychologist or specialist to tell them that something's wrong with me, I'm asking, the school board, how could you elaborate on that?
We're not going to engage in discussion. You have an opportunity to speak.
Well, could someone explain what they meant by that?
No. That's not what we're here for this evening. This is your opportunity to speak to us.
Okay. So I'm asking for me to not be discriminated against my learning disabilities because I didn't finish school in the Forest Hills School District in the ninth grade due to my learning disabilities, and my daughter is struggling with the same disabilities and is now off her IEP, and we're getting an IEE, and I wish for them to consider the whole Independent Education Evaluation Report with everything that the doctors recommend, because my daughter has advocated on multiple attempts of how she learns as an individual in her own unique way. And just because you can't see her disability because it's in her head?
That's time.
All right. Thank you so much, and have a great evening.
The next topic is transportation, and that's Ms. Patty Taylor.
Hello? My name's Patty Taylor, and my topic is the transportation facility. I want to ask a rhetorical question to all that's present and to Mr. Prebels and the board. Why are we here tonight? And actually, we heard a lot of that, right? Why are we all standing here? Can you not hear?
Pull the mic down closer here. There you go.
Why are we all here tonight, right? We are here because of our children. I'm here because of my two children at Anderson High School. There are 1,315 students there. I ask this because without the students, none of us would be here tonight. We would not need a superintendent, a board, a principal, even bus drivers. Our children are why we are here. I would like to read part of the Board of Education mission statement. It says, under the bylaws and policies, it says, "We must invest in our students. They are our highest priority." It also reads, "We must maintain a safe and secure learning environment." Excuse me. And that is why I'm standing here tonight, to ask the superintendent and Board of Education to relocate that transportation facility from Anderson High School campus and rework that space into a safe and functional parking area before the school resumes back in the fall of 2018. Under the current parking area, it is not safe, and I attribute that, the safety issues wholly to the superintendent and board decisions so far. The 2014 bond provided funds for the relocation. Three years have passed without the relocation happening. The Mount Carmel property is the 12th property considered and rejected due to being cost prohibitive. I am left wondering, what is the real reason for the lack of resolution? Is there a particular group opposing the relocation, and that's why you've not made serious movement towards completing the relocation? After three years and numerous failed attempts, I have to say that it does not appear you're making Anderson students a priority. You have prioritized the office staff by purchasing and renovating the admin office before addressing Anderson. You have prioritized focusing on the redskin controversy, and I suspect that you have prioritized the bus drivers opposed to the transportation relocation.
Ms. Taylor, that's time. Thank you.
There is always a solution.
Thank you.
You have to be willing.
Next topic is school start times. The first speaker is Holly Johnson.
It was really great to hear all of the wonderful things going on in Forest Hills, and it was a reminder to me as to why I moved my family here nine years ago was for the schools. A couple of months ago, I opened up a survey in my email and, from Forest Hills, and it was titled, "Late Start Time." And I took the survey and took a few minutes to think about all of the education research that I've been doing in my life and learning about what the research says about that start time. And then, as I sat there and thought about all of us who have been kind of talking about it, and I was struck by thinking about, we are Forest Hills, and Forest Hills does do what's best for kids. Sometimes what's best for kids isn't always, there's not always an easy answer to it. But what I do is follow the research, and the research tells us that our adolescent sleep cycle starts at around 11:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. The research tells us that three-quarters of our adolescents in the United States get under eight hours of sleep, two-fifths under six hours. The research tells us that the health impact of not getting enough sleep causes depression and anxiety. We hear that over and over and over again in our kids, and so I'm just here to say that I'm very supportive of Forest Hills looking at the school time. Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda and Tricia Mullin?
Oh, I just want to say thank you for considering school start times, healthier start times later. So I'm Brendan Mullin, and I'm a student athlete at Nagel. I currently get to the bus stop at around 6:33 every morning. In the morning, everyone in the hallways is like half asleep, and it just seems crazy that any of those students can get any quality work done that early in the morning, but they have to. I mean, they kind of have to. Many might say that if school started later, there would not be enough time for sports after school. We can adjust sports. Academics come first. Did you know that the American Academic Academy of Pediatrics says adolescent athletes who slept eight or nine, eight or more hours each night were 68% less likely to be injured than athletes who regularly slept less? Also, a school in Louden County, Virginia, has top-ranked football and girls' soccer program, and the starting bell is at 9:00 in the morning. Just think, that could be Forest Hills if school started later. Please take this into consideration and vote yes for the school start time being later. Thanks.
Thank you.
I really don't have anything to add to that. I think he said it all, Brendan.
Nicole Lundergan?
Hi, I'm Nicole Lundergan, the parent of three children at Wilson currently, and we've had just a wonderful, wonderful experience, thanks to the principal, the assistant principal, and the teachers there. I fully expect that to continue. The one thing that's causing my 12-year-old's stress is this new start time. She's really, really worried about having to get up that early in the morning and still get everything finished and get enough sleep. I also have a stepson who went through Nagel and Turpin, and he was textbook, from what the studies show. He was up till midnight every night, always lethargic, always tired, and who knows what he could have done if he had gotten more sleep. In addition to that, I wanted to bring up the safety issue. My stepson was getting on the bus in the morning at 6:40 in the morning. It was dark. We have no sidewalks on our street. When it was snowing, that meant they were standing on the street waiting for the bus. So I think that safety is an important consideration as well. So I fully support the change of the start time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If I'm correct, the rest of the speakers are on the Anderson High School logo and nickname. Again, two minutes each. Please be respectful of each other and allow each other the opportunity to speak uninterrupted. Our first speaker is Erin Payment.
Good evening. I really enjoyed the Volunteer Spirit Awards and the recognition, and I'm here tonight to speak to your better angels. So there's often different approaches. My name is Dr. Erin Payment. I'm the chairperson for the Sault Ste. Marie Tribe of Chipewa Indians. We are the largest tribe east of the Mississippi. I'm also here on behalf of NCAI, National Congress of American Indians, for which I'm their first vice president. I'm also a former school board president, and so I understand the role of educational leaders. And I'm here as an elected official, though, in a government capacity, not as a special interest. And so I do speak on behalf of my tribal nation. I'm elected to do that, and also on behalf of NCAI. I want to call your attention to the Interstate Leadership License and Consortium, a national standards body for educational leaders, which calls for providing a safe and culturally appropriate environment for all students to learn. Using a term which finds its origins in an ad for the bloodied scalp of American Indian men, women, and children is not culturally appropriate. I did bring a copy that I'll circulate, so you can see the origin of the term "redskin" came from a bounty on American Indian scalps. That was testified by Congresswoman Betty McCollum in the Senate Indian Affairs Committee just two years ago. In 2009, the American Psychological Association took a position to describe the psychologically damaging impact on children, not only American Indian children, but all children. I know that you don't have a lot of Indian children in your school system, but you're also teaching in the perpetuation the negative stereotypes to all of your children. So I'll close, because I'm almost out of time, but history is on the side of right on this issue. Slavery, women denied the right to vote, and American Indians not considered as citizens until 1924 are examples of erasing oppressive practices. The University of Miami changed their mascot, and recently, the Cleveland Indians changed their practice. So do you want to be, as a school system, on the side of right and on a positive change or perpetuating a racist practice? So with that, thank you.
Thank you. Tony Henson?
I'm a quarter Cherokee and on the board of the Native American Guardians Association. NAGA was formed to be the voice of the overwhelming majority of Native Americans who support the names and logos and sports, but whose voices have all been left out of the debate. This issue was dealt with in Anderson in 2003, when the board voted unanimously to remain the Redskins. To the extent times have changed, the board who is allowing this attempt at double jeopardy should know, a Washington Post poll conducted in 2016 revealed 91% of Native Americans have no problem with the Redskins name, up 1% from a similar 2004 Annenberg survey. How can the changers claim to have legitimacy when 91% of the people they claim to represent do not agree with them? The truth is, this radical movement is the creation of political and academic elites. Here is the logo of the National Congress of the American Indian. To many, it is cartoonish in comparison to the distinguished Anderson logo. Using the logic of the changers, the exact same image NCI uses would somehow become a racist symbol if put on a sports uniform. It is preposterous. The vast majority of Native Americans are well-assimilated, patriotic people who love their country and who would never dream of terrorizing peaceful school districts like Anderson with disrespectful shouts of racism. The true Indian way is to walk the red road of respect and honor. The changer elites ask, "How can NAGA go against the leadership of some Indian tribes and organizations?" To which we say, "How can they go against the people?" Likewise, how can this board go against the people? The vast majority of rank-and-file Native Americans stand with the equally strong majority of Anderson students, alumni, and community members who say, "Go Redskins."
Mike Hall?
Does Mike live in the district?
It's sad and unfortunate that certain groups in this country would have you feel like you have to...
I know that you don't have a lot of Indian children in your school system, but you're also teaching in the perpetuation the negative stereotypes to all of your children. So I'll close because I'm almost out of time, but history is on the side of right on this issue. Slavery, women denied the right to vote, and American Indians not considered as citizens until 1924 are examples of erasing oppressive practices. The University of Miami changed their mascot, and recently the Cleveland Indians changed their practice. So do you want to be, as a school system, on the side of right and on a positive change or perpetuating a racist practice? So with that, thank you.
Tony Henson.
I'm a quarter Cherokee and on the board of the Native American Guardians Association. NAGA was formed to be the voice of the overwhelming majority of Native Americans who support the names and logos and sports, but whose voices have all been left out of the debate. This issue was dealt with in Anderson in 2003 when the board voted unanimously to remain the Redskins. To the extent times have changed, the board who is allowing this attempt at double jeopardy should know a Washington Post poll conducted in 2016 revealed 91% of Native Americans have no problem with the Redskins name, up 1% from a similar 2004 Annenberg survey. How can the changers claim to have legitimacy when 91% of the people they claim to represent do not agree with them? The truth is, this radical movement is the creation of political and academic elites. Here is the logo of the National Congress of the American Indian. To many, it is cartoonish in comparison to the distinguished Anderson logo. Using the logic of the changers, the exact same image NCI uses would somehow become a racist symbol if put on a sports uniform. It is preposterous. The vast majority of Native Americans are well-assimilated, patriotic people who love their country and who would never dream of terrorizing peaceful school districts like Anderson with disrespectful shouts of racism. The true Indian way is to walk the red road of respect and honor. The changer elites ask, how can NAGA go against the leadership of some Indian tribes and organizations to which we say, how can they go against the people? Likewise, how can this board go against the people? The vast majority of rank-and-file Native Americans stand with the equally strong majority of Anderson students, alumni, and community members who say, go Redskins![566.16][566.16](applause)
Mike Hall.
Does Mike live in the district? It's sad and unfortunate that certain groups in this country would have you feel like you have to believe and think like them, and if you don't, you're hateful and racist. And that's what happened here in Anderson Township when people began to throw around unsupported claims regarding the Anderson Redskin, even when studies have shown that 91% of the Native Americans have no problem with people using the Redskins name. I want to point out an area that I'm very concerned that the school board study committee has not considered. There's a lot of research on the mental health impact following a bitter campaign that attempts to take away the school image. The research focuses on students, how they're affected. Let me tell you about some of the research. Findings in the Journal of Contemporary Educational Psychology state that a teenager's positive identity is closely tied to their high school experience. School symbols help to form certain aspects of a student's identity. Students start as early as elementary school, thinking about where they're going to go to high school, and they think someday we're going to be a Redskin. And then they go to middle school, and being a Redskin becomes a part of who they are. And by the time they're in high school, the Redskin is a big part of their identity. The National Institute of Mental Health suggests that in bitter campaigns that end in loss of the school symbols, traumatized teens show symptoms of post-traumatic stress disorder, PTSD, for months. The National Institute of Mental Health clarifies that these symptoms are also accompanied by depression, substance abuse, and other anxiety disorders. Should the Anderson Redskin be changed, we're looking at the potential of a whole generation of Anderson students who will be forced to deal with very serious identity issues because it's happened in other communities. No one wants this to happen in the Anderson community, and I would truly hope that this school board, you, have addressed the issue.
Patricia Luganbowl. I pronounced that improperly, I apologize.
It's Patricia Luganbowl. Hard name to pronounce. I am a graduate, the first graduating class out of Turpin High School, which means I went to both Anderson and Turpin. I love representing my schools, as my T-shirt shows. I was asked to, by Eunice Davison, who is a full-blooded Native American and a NAGA member, to read what she has written because she is not able to be here tonight. I am honored to do this because I am also part Indian. I thank Eunice for this information. She writes, "When I was asked why I like the name Redskins, my simple reply was, 'What it's not to like?'" It's a strong warrior name that makes me proud to be a Redskin. Let me tell you of a little history of why American Indians rally around the Redskins' name and logo. The name Redskins connected to sports was first brought on by a fellow named Lone Star Dietz. He played football for the team at Carlisle Indian School back in the early 1900s. Dietz also played alongside Jim Thorpe, another famous athlete, who makes the American Indians proud of his accomplishments. Then Lone Star Dietz went on to coach the Boston Braves in 1932 and clearly liked the Redskins name because he asked the Boston Braves to change their name from Braves to the Redskins. When I read about Dietz asking for his team to be called the Redskins, I knew why I and most Indians have pride in that name. Another reason that makes me proud of Redskins is the logo. Blackie Wetzel, who was chairman of the Blackfoot Nation in Montana and the president of National Congress of American Indians at that time, and personally knew President John F. Kennedy, traveled to Washington, DC to speak to the Redskins NFL--
Ms. Luganbowl, thank you.
Oh, thank you.[872.23][872.23](applause)
Tina Downs.
Hi, good evening. I'm Tina Downs. I represent more than the 90% of the community, to keep the name. Racism is defined as an inherent superiority of a particular race. The Anderson Redskins are not racist. In the history of the school, we've chosen to respect, to honor, and to uphold Redskins' name. When the school began in 1937, Ohioans were just coming out of the Great Depression. People were hungry and unemployed to the tune of 37.3%, much higher for factory workers as 40% were without work and 67% of construction workers. They looked to the painted warriors and identified with their bravery, loyalty, and strength due to the steep Native American culture around them, such as the Ohio River, the best river in the Seneca language, also in the Anderson area, ancient burial mounds, and nearby Fort Ancient and Serpent Mound. Both sides want respect. How are we going to get there? Has there been an opportunity for the two sides to meet in the middle, to negotiate and create a win-win solution, as would be the Native American way? In the current win-lose scenario, more than a name is at risk. More than the student's psychological and emotional well-being is at risk. Has the board researched factual data, not subjective matter, on the effects of student suicide due to identity changes? When the decision is a forced change, how it harms the students? How about the statistical effects on the community? Please take out a quarter or a nickel and look at it. It does state on the back, e pluribus unum, "Out of many, we are one." This is a Native concept that still holds true today. Are we achieving the goal of unity of one? The board needs to take its time for a fair and balanced decision, not bowing to outside pressure to change history. If the Redskins lose their name, the community will suffer in many ways and will not only affect Anderson, but a total of nine schools in the Forest Hills District, not to mention 79 other schools in the state of Ohio who bear a Native American iconic name. In addition, it will hit everyone economically if the levy does not pass, housing depreciating, community uproar, and loss of identity. The last high school that considered all the facts and took the time to really look into the challenges and issues I just mentioned, voted to keep their Redskins name while simultaneously improving their early American and Native history courses. I urge you to follow their lead.[1020.01][1020.01](applause)
Mary Pember.
I've just described to you, I've introduced myself, and the way that Ojibwe people traditionally do, and most Native people first describe their tribal affiliation, their place that they live in, and also their associated clan. And some of the reason I do this is just to give you a sense of the diversity of Native tribes. First of all, the last time I was here during a committee meeting, there were a number of statements made that there were no real quote-unquote Indians, Native people here in the district, and that real Native people didn't care. I just want to let you know that I am a real Native American person. I am Ojibwe. Here's my enrollment card. It's a federally recognized tribe, and I've lived here 20 years. I'm a homeowner, and I pay taxes. Again, back to the diversity, as you might imagine, if there are over 500 federally recognized tribes, there's a great diversity of culture, language, and opinion and politics, just like there are within the white folks that live here in Anderson and in Cincinnati, Ohio. And certainly, not everybody is going to agree. There are many Native communities, I'm sure, that might embrace it, you know? And I'm not here to speak for everybody because Native people are not a monolithic group any more than African-Americans or any other ethnicity are a monolithic group. And I would ask that you extend the same diversity of understanding to the rest of us that you might do to yourselves. I also wanted to mention, as part of my work, I'm a journalist and I travel throughout Indian country. I've been doing so for a long time. I've been Ojibwe for a pretty long time. And on my reservation and throughout all of the communities I've been to, I've never heard anybody say "hi," R-word, never heard that. And I've never heard people refer to each other in that way.
Ms. Pember, thank you. Sharon Scott.
I am a resident of Anderson Township. I have a junior at Anderson High School. I'm a Turpin grad. The reason I gave you my full name is because my name comes from history, tradition, and my family roots, just like I'm sure all of you here have a story about how you received your names. Since this is your name, you need to think about your own history, tradition, and meaning of your names. And are you willing to change your name because 10% of people come to you and say, "Your name offends me, and I demand you to change it," or 90% of the people that you know love that name and want you to keep it? My question to you is, when will this end? Most professional sports teams have some sort of animal name. When will PETA demand that they change their names? When will atheists demand that the California Angels change their name? What about the Turpin Spartan? The Spartan caricature could very well offend many Greek-Americans. Are you willing to change their mascot? Anyone can be offended by anything in today's society. During some of the committee meetings, Mr. Freeman spoke a lot about distraction. The only distraction facing Anderson High School right now is the construction and the fiasco that has been created by hiring and firing a company, and then to have them rehired as a subcontractor. I believe that you are trying to distract this community from the construction debacle by focusing on something that this community overwhelmingly does not want changed. You need to get students' opinions by creating a survey in Schoology, just as if you did the survey on Facebook about the start times, you need to put that out there also. This board needs to take a stand and not change the logo. Mark your line in the sand, make the statement not to change it--
Thank you, Ms.
--and never in the future.
Homer Shadowheart.
Members of the board, I'd address you. My name is Homer Shadowheart. I am Susquehanna Iroquois. Noticed on your logo, the middle word is empower. It's impossible to empower someone that you've insulted on a racial level. It is impossible to empower someone that you have offended or made ashamed of the name of their high school. William Shakespeare said, "A rose by any other name would smell as sweet." That is true with a high school name. It will smell as sweet, it will not change the attitude of the school. You have a very important and daunting task, and as Nikki Haley from South Carolina had when she removed Confederate flags and decided to be on the right side of history and not on the side of racism.
Chad Cunningham.
Hi, good evening. My name is Chad Cunningham, graduate of Anderson High School. Thanks to the school board, you have the, in the committee, the unenvious task of dealing with lots of issues. So I, on behalf of myself personally, thank you for that. But I've been asked to give a few additional facts regarding supporting the Anderson Redskins logo. Many of those pushing for the eradication of the Redskins logo claim that it is harmful to Native youth by citing this APA study that we've already heard here tonight, the American Psychological Association, refers to a study done by a person named Freyberg, and they have negative assumptions and assertions about us, non-Native Americans, that we don't understand American Indians, and that all that we know about American Indians are mascot images portrayed in newspapers and on the television. I think this claims that we're pretty ignorant, and that our logo is cartoonish, childish, and inhuman. I don't see that at all in this. This speaks pride, and honor, and power. And moreover, with our community of Anderson being focused on Native American culture, traditions, our town clearly doesn't fit into what the APA calls as non-Native Americans. On the contrary, an APA president, Dr. Phil Zambardo, produced results on his own study that talked about many of those on the other side could have a post-negative mindset, and that's what we've heard from Mike Hall already tonight about causing problems with our youth and making them more aggressive, anxious, less stable. So what we're looking at here is, what we want to reiterate is that we want to come together. We're not looking for a win-lose situation. We're looking for a win-win situation and have a positive impact on our community by keeping the Redskins tradition focused as one, oriented towards a positive future. Thank you.
Joseph Lotterow.
First of all, I'd like to say that I am of the Ojibwe of Canada, but if we're splitting hairs and we're trying to be politically correct, Ojibwe is actually an English term. The Ojibwe are really Anishna Be. But the fact is that we're looking at something that people are looking for political correctness in this country. I would like everyone that is Native American to stand up, first of all, or a descendant of Native American. Guess what? All of you need to stand up because you are all born in this country. That makes you Native American. You're not of the first people, but you are Native American. We are all Americans. And this is the kind of division that we've seen in this country. We've seen the radicalists of some of those that are bringing guns to school. I think that is one of the major issues that we need to be discussing as to why this is happening. It's happening because of the division. Some of the things that we're talking about is making change, okay? If we're talking about changing the designation of Redskins, what does it mean? Okay? My skin gets a reddish, dark glow to it. I was once asked to pick up a Lakota Indian when I was driving a shuttle bus in Colorado, and there was Hispanics standing there, and I could pick out that Lakota a mile away. Why? Because he had a reddish glow to his skin that the Hispanics did not have, okay? If they're interpreting it as someone that's scalp, first of all, I went to school at Dartmouth College. Scalping was taught to the Native Americans by the Europeans during wartime to collect bounties, okay? That's the correctness of it. If we want to get politically correct, it's getting to the point of, I would say, the term is absurdity. I think the Redskins, what it denotes is the heritage, the proudness--
Thank you, Mr. Lotterow. Thank you.
That's all I can say?[1701.11][1701.11](applause)
That concludes public commentary. I do appreciate everybody being respectful, giving each other the opportunity to have your say. Thank you very much. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or you can leave.[1724.63][1724.63](laughing)
Nothing about education.[1730.33][1730.33](laughing)
How does Mike Hall need to speak to his fellow members?
Well, as long as other people aren't either.[1748.01][1748.01](laughing)
It's amazing that an issue like this caused us that.
Disappointed. We've got so many good things for this history and that school.
Yeah, no, I just move on.
All right, we're going to continue. Item 8.1, proposed change to school start times for 2018, 2019. Ms. Lawson. Ms. Lawson.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm just going to briefly talk about the proposal for healthy school start times for next school year. I don't know if any of you have read Dan Pink's work, but his most recent book, When, talks a lot about how when we do things matters just as much as what we do. And so offering a quality education to our kids, but also when we offer that education is very important, as many have alluded to this evening. So I just wanted to briefly outline our process. You know, Mr. Prebles, when he came to Forest Hills, he led a strategic planning effort where multiple stakeholders got to get involved with, you know, what do we think the vision for Forest Hills should be? And during that process, he outlined work related to 21st century learning environments and schedules in our middle schools and high schools. And so our secondary administrative team really wanted to get a lot of feedback from our stakeholders about, you know, when you look at the school experience and you look at what our children are learning, how would you change that experience? What are you noticing as some pain points that you would like to, you know, to solve? And so we received many proposals, and many of those proposals actually included information about how kids felt like, kids and adults felt like our start times needed to be later. In fact, Stacy Bailey at Anderson High School, her first semester psychology class, they were studying the brain, adolescent brain, and they wrote letters to our administrative team outlining just awesome research related to the brain. And that research included sleep cycles, and they were pleading with us to consider actually changing our start times to be later. In fact, so many proposals were so compelling that we really started to think about, you know, what would that look like? And we wanted to make sure that we engaged the community in that discussion, which is why many of you received that survey in February, which I will talk about the results of that survey in just a moment. But the survey results were so favorable that we thought, wow, like the research is there, and our community is very supportive from these survey results, you know, we think we might really have something here. So we took a careful look at many of the different factors, you know, I just cannot thank our transportation department enough and Richard Porter. And we realized that, you know, we thought, we thought we have something, we can make this happen for next year. And so we, here we are, we have something that we really want you to consider. So the research has already been outlined so eloquently by those who had spoken in the public commentary. Just wanted to reiterate that it is science that during those adolescent years, children struggle to go to sleep earlier in the evening. Many cannot get their bodies to fall asleep until around 11:00 PM. And they need a lot of sleep to perform well in school, just like many of us need a lot of sleep to perform well in our jobs. And lack of sleep puts them at risk, not just for performing poorly in school, but also puts them at risk of many other things, including some health risks. So I just wanted to quickly outline the survey results. Like I said, they were clearly in favor of later start times in middle and high schools. And we hadn't taken the survey, so I wanted to share the numbers of people who participated. But just to quickly outline some numbers for you, 84% of our students were in favor of later start times, 91% of our parents, and 85% of our staff. And so we thought that was very compelling, and people were so passionate about this that they even said, you know, while we would like to have our middle and high schools start at the same time, we understand that if in order to accommodate this, you have to stagger the start by 30 minutes or so, we're okay with that. And many were also very pleased with their elementary start times and were okay with that five-minute adjustment if needed in order to accommodate this kind of a change. So that brings us to our proposal. We would love to see Anderson and Turpin High Schools begin at 8:00 AM and dismiss at 2:40, starting next school year. Nagel Middle School starting at 8:30 AM and ending at 3:15 PM. And then all elementary schools with just that slight five-minute adjustment because of that transportation science and getting everybody where they needed to go. So that would be a 9:15 AM start and a dismissal at 3:45 PM. With that said, we've outlined lots of details in the FAQs. And the last thought I wanted to leave you with, you know, leadership often requires a willingness to start a conversation that matters. And sometimes those conversations are uncomfortable, but I'm grateful to work with leaders who keep children at the center. And with that said, the superintendent recommends the board approve the proposed start times for the 18-19 school year.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve the change of school start times affected by the 2018.
Oh, is this part of the consent agenda?
It can be. It was proposed to be, but it doesn't.
Oh, that's fine. I'm good with that. Consent agenda.
It's looking good, though.
Okay.
Great. Am I dismissed?
Well, you got a motion. That's it. You haven't even had a second yet. All right, thank you, Ms. Lawson. Item 8.2, the West DVA School Messenger Revised Renewal. Mr. Prebles.
Or is it Mr. Mace?
Apparently it's Mr. Prebles. With the assistance of Mr. Mace. Thank you. Can you assist me, please? I want to make sure that we explain it properly.
This renewal is for the school messenger program that we use. This is a notification system that we use to notify in times of there's a school delay or when students are absent, they'll get a call from the school notifying the parent that there is an absence during the day. So we are looking to renew this contract, and the superintendent recommends the board approve the revised renewal authorization with West Interactive Services Corporation, DVA School Messenger for the period June 30th, 2018 through June 29th, 2019, as shown on the attachment.
All right. That's not really correct. It's a four-year contract for $40,000, $41.76. I know the agenda says it's a one-year contract, but it's four, and I've reviewed it with Mr. Prebles. I just think it's important that we recognize it's a four-year contract and not a one-year contract, and I'm still fine with it.
So the four-year contract is based on an annual percentage of students that are linked to the program. And so there's a window of a number of students which creates the price. And so if there's a fluctuation in that four-year contract, on a yearly basis, we come back together to ensure that the price is established at the correct level. So it is a four-year, and so that we have that opportunity to come back on a yearly basis to reevaluate that. But I don't anticipate that that will happen in our life cycle with this particular contract.
How long have you been with School Messenger?
We've been with them for several years. Our databases are consistent with the information that they have. If we were to make a switch at this particular point in time, it would add a tremendous amount of work because the student names have to be hand-loaded in, and we would be recreating a database that already works very well for the school system. And so I believe that this is the best circumstance at this particular point in time.
Any other questions for Mr. Mace? Thank you. Item 9.1, the House Bill 512 Resolution. Randy, are you going to present that?
Sure. We presented that at the last meeting. We had an opportunity to take a look at it, delivered hard copy. Just a quick refresher, this is a proposal by our state legislature to combine the Ohio Department of Education, the Department of Higher Education, would eliminate the position of chancellor, would combine Board of Regents, and the Governor's Office of Workforce Transformation into a Department of Learning and Achievement. And although, you know, anytime there's streamlining, that's usually a good thing, but not in this case. The fact that ODE would essentially go away, and we would really not have a state superintendent anymore, this would be just bad all around for K-12 education. I talked to a number of people within our district and around the state, and this is not supported. I've heard a few individuals who felt like there were some aspects of this that might have merit, but as it is, it's basically unacceptable for K-12. There was supposed to be a substitute, House Bill was supposed to be introduced today, but apparently it wasn't. Because I think that they're possibly saying that they're not going to have the votes for this. But passing this resolution will help put our name in the stack of school districts that are opposed to it.
Any questions for Randy on the resolution?
Thank you.
Item 10.1, the calendar. Mr. Broadwater.
We're going to jump right into business operations, and the first item there, 10.1, is calendar. The calendar, we, the Ohio Revised Code 3313.48B, according to that, a public hearing on the 2019-2020 district calendar was held last board meeting, which was March 19th of this year. The proposed draft for the 2019-2020 district calendar is attached, and the superintendent is recommending the board approve the 2019-2020 district calendar as shown in the attachment. The next section, we're going to get into change orders. And before I get into change orders, what I would like to say is through the change order process, we always say that our board members receive an update prior to the meeting in terms of what these change orders reference. But maybe we've been remiss in not saying there's a contingency built into each one of these projects that covers, ideally, covers all of the change orders. So for example, if the project at Anderson High School, we have contingency set at 4%. Right now, we are well below that, but we obviously have a lot of the project left. So when you hear a change order, understand that that has been built into the program for the most part. And I'm going to go through a little bit later and show you a chart where we are with the elementaries, the two high schools, and Nagel Middle School, just to make sure that, I don't want to say dispel rumors, but just so you're informed. And I would tell you, anytime you have any questions in regards to the budget, I am more than happy to take a call or take an email, and I've taken plenty of those. You may not like my answers, but I'll give you the truth, and we'll let you know where we are with the budget. And right now, we're in pretty good shape, but we've got a long way to go this summer. We have a big summer in terms of Anderson and Turpin, but our elementaries and Nagel Middle School are in good shape. So with that, 10.2 is change orders for Anderson High School site package. The site package is different than the building. The building, I will explain a little bit later, is where Performance Construction, we've had some issues with them in the building package. The site package is different. The change order for the site package, Change Order 11, is in the amount of $6,280. It's installing conduit and wire to feed the fixtures at about $6,600. Replace handicap ramp and curb damage outside of an art room in the back of Anderson High School, which is about $400. Car stops that were not installed, we received a credit of $728. So all told, the superintendent is recommending the board approve the change orders submitted by Performance Construction in the amount of $6,280. I will also tell you that last month at the board meeting, we did not itemize the change orders. I had a member of the community ask that we do so, simply that we could explain some of the charges on the playground change order that we had. So we've gone back to that so that we can answer any questions that you have and kind of enlighten you what the change orders are, so that if you do call with questions, you've got the specific subject to talk about. 10.3, change orders for Mercer Elementary. The first change order, number 39, is for $41,497. This is for premium time for the work of August 12th of 2017 to September 10th of 2017. And you might say that seems like a long time ago, and it was. The reason is, as I moved into this role and working on the construction sites, we wanted to make sure we vetted through this premium time at Mercer. And what the premium time was for was to get Mercer open in time for our kids to get into class. And so the front of Mercer, we had to hustle to get through that. And in the summer, there was premium time. I can tell you, our architect, SSO E, our owner's rep, Mr. Zimmer, myself, we have vetted through this. We have asked for timesheets, and we've gone through each and every one of those, so that we are confident that this is what the value is. And that's why it took so long, and we're sitting here in April for something that was in August. Change order 40 for $10,369 were for various changes. First furnished and installed ceilings in five reading rooms. In the learning commons at Mercer, we took the reading rooms and made them offices, so we wanted to finish the ceilings. Bulletin 3 is rubber tiles on ramp. That is in the art room. That is for $3,000. The prior one was for $2,000. Demo plaster ceiling to reroute electric was right around $5,200 for that. And so the superintendent is recommending the board approve the change orders submitted by Mark Spaulding Construction in the amount of $51,866. Last set of change orders is for Turpin High School. Change order 44 is for $33,280. Part of that is to provide a power feed to the rooftop unit. That is $8,600. That is something that was left off the drawing by the architect. Install power for a relocated jet filter was $4,500. Plumbing revisions was right around $12,000. Room C220, a rated shaft that is there, was $4,200 to replace. Miscellaneous electrical revisions was right around $3,800. Change order 45 was for $33,667. What we have found at Turpin, and Mr. Spencer will validate this, that the masonry, some of the masonry outside in the back of Turpin, as we worked on the inside of the classrooms, with the science labs and the science classrooms, the architect and Monarch Construction discovered that there were rooms that were getting some water. Therefore, the masonry in the back had to be replaced, was not part of the project. Therefore, we have the change order to make sure our classrooms are nice and safe. So the masonry restoration was $28,000. Stairpipe enclosure was $2,000. Gym mezzanine floor support was right around $3,200. For change order 46, that is $11,343, removing an existing silo was about $6,800. And miscellaneous drywall revisions was $4,500. And the superintendent recommends the board approve the change orders submitted by Monarch Construction in the amount of $78,290. The last portion I've got, just to give you a quick update, and I've thrown these two charts up there. If you've got the newsletter, the community newsletter, what we put in the last newsletter, we heard people wanted actual values, so we put the values. This is the last newsletter. That is the chart that's on the bottom, okay? What I've done is, believe me, we vet through all these prices. We've got spreadsheets beyond spreadsheets, but the one that we look at, district-wide, is where we are. Where is our bond fund and where have we spent the money? So if you look at the top chart there, the column that's in yellow, I put that in yellow so you could see the difference from this month to last month. So in the yellow, you can see that the values have all changed. So we've worked on each and every one of those projects, some a little bit, some a lot. If you look at air, I think it's about $5 and so that it's gone up by. And that's basically letting you know that we look at each and every cent that is spent on each project, and that, I believe that was for a little bit of hardware on an exit sign at Air Elementary. So what I have put there is so you can see from one month to the next, the biggest change that you'll notice is Anderson and Turpin. Those are our two projects that are going. So Anderson is up about $1.3 million. As we go through the project, there are pay applications that the architect, the owner's rep, Mr. Zimmer, myself, and some other individuals go through and vet out before we actually do the pay application, and that is quite the process. But we have gone up by about $1.3 million at Anderson, and we paid out $1.4 million at Turpin, if you look at that chart. So if I were to do a newsletter tonight, that is the chart you would see, all right? So if you look at the bottom also, you'll see, I'll look at the top chart, the original allocation is about $103 million. We have spent $85 million, and we've got $17 million to go, basically on the two large projects that we have. And I'll try and explain as we go through there. But if you look at Anderson, the original allocation was $25 million. We've got $14 million, and we've got a lot to do. We've got a lot this summer that we've got to get done, that we're excited about, but we've got a lot of work to do. So just kind of recap, some thoughts for you, and I think it's important to highlight this, so we don't, again, we don't have people saying different things. It's very easy to pick up the phone and call me and ask me any questions you have, and we'll go through anything that you have. But if you look at our four elementaries that are left to go, we have Maddox. If you were to talk to Mr. Trailer tonight, I think he would say he's extremely excited about how the facility has turned out with our different learning flex areas. What we have left at Maddox is we've got a trailer we have to remove. It was supposed to be gone two weeks ago, but the weather has not allowed that. And we've got an arc flash study for the electric, and then we're ready to go through the punch list. And Maddox has been a very good product. And Maddox has been a very good project. Mercer, tonight, we did the overtime pay. We have to do the arc flash study, just like Maddox, and then with Mercer, we're ready to punch out, and we're going to move through that and make sure everything is done appropriately. For Summit, it's just the electric arc flash study, and all of the elementaries, that's part of the project, so that we make sure that the electric is working and functioning at the elementaries. Wilson, two things we have left to punch out there. Windows, we've got a few windows that we have to make sure are not leaking, and the landscaping in the front yard where the former structure was, we've got some issues that we're going to address before we allow kids on that. Okay, so, Turpin, where we are with Turpin, we have, right now, Monarch Construction is working on the English classrooms, and they're getting done early. If you get into Turpin and see these classrooms, they're going to look like classrooms. They're going to be square. They're going to have the new furniture and technology at the end of the summer. So, where we are right now, the English classrooms are going to finish up. To Mr. Spencer's credit, he's been able to move teachers around, and they've done a great job of being accommodating. Once we move the English teachers out, we have the social studies area that we're going to work on over the summer, along with some cafeteria and some other ideas that need to be done. When the kiddos get back, what we have left is the top floor, which is, I believe, nine math classrooms, and therefore, the multipurpose gym is going to be used for the flex space, so you'll have those kids in the gym. Once those nine classrooms are done, those kids move into the classroom, we open up the multipurpose gym, and by November, December of '18, Turpin is done, and we just punch out, and we're good to go. Right now, with the change orders for Turpin High School, we are still tracking below the contingency that was set. I will tell you that we're close with the masonry work that we have left. It wouldn't surprise me if we go over a little bit, but I still think we're tracking along very, very well at Turpin High School. At Anderson, the building, as it was brought up earlier, we have Performance Construction, which the district did have issues with and moved towards letting them go. The bonding company that bonded Performance Construction is Travelers. Travelers decided they were going to keep Performance Construction, so that was a Travelers' decision, the bonding company's decision. But what they did was brought in an engineering firm named Vertex to oversee Performance Construction. So, during the week, when we go to our construction meetings, you see representatives from Vertex sitting in with Performance Construction, along with Travelers' representatives as we go through the projects. There is more oversight as we go through that. The new phasing plan that we have, we have changed it to where we are going to do the classrooms, so it's going to be the English hallway, the foreign language hallway, the social studies hallways, the math hallways. So, it's the classrooms along Forest Road, and then down toward, down the baseball field towards the softball field. All of those are going to be completed with the new schedule that we have. Travelers has ensured the schedule. We have vetted out this schedule over and over and over again. It's taken many, many months to get here. We are excited for it because it means virtually every classroom in Anderson is going to be done over the summer with furniture and technology and air conditioning. So, at the end of this summer, hopefully, we've got a lot of great things to talk about with Anderson High School, and we're very, very excited about that. So, what we'll have left the following year would be the performing arts wing. The good news is, the multipurpose building is going to be done in July, so that is the two-story structure in the back. We can use that for a flex area if we need to when we're completing the other areas. So, that's worked out very, very well, and Mr. Fellows was extremely instrumental in that phasing plan. So, where we are with Anderson High School, the contingency money, we are still under simply because we have not really gotten into the guts of the program. The multipurpose building is a brand-new facility, so you would expect not many change orders because that's brand-new. When we get into the renovations, that's when you start finding things in the walls that you weren't prepared for. So, summing up where we are, right now, we are less than 1% over budget if we were to be complete today. And when you try and figure out what's 1% mean, I look at it, if I'm renovating a kitchen and it's $10,000 to renovate a kitchen, and they come back and say, "Well, it's going to be 1% more," that's $100. So, everything in relative terms, obviously, you never want to be over budget, but right now, we are tracking along pretty, pretty well. I do know that at Anderson High School, we've done some value engineering, which means we've pulled some of the costs out of the program with the chillers, with the boilers, with the lighting. So, those costs are going to go up, so those will increase the value that we are over budget. But again, I don't think it's going to be too much, but that's something we're going to track and make sure that that doesn't rise too much. So, at the end, what I would tell you is, again, please call or email if you have any questions. We are working very hard every single day on these projects because we want to do what's best for kids. All of the great things that we heard about tonight, that's why we do them. So, we want to make sure that we're tracking along. The one thing I didn't mention, the transportation that was brought up, as you can see, the money that is there, the money that was spent, we've worked on some safety and security where the buses are now, so that's taken a little bit out of the budget, but you can see we're tracking along at about $2.9 million still there for any transportation costs that, obviously, we were working on every single day also and trying to find a solution for that as well. So, with that, I finished my report. Questions?
Question on the calendar. So, I think this is going to engender a lot more discussion a year from now when people actually look at it. The 15th is earlier than I've ever seen it. What was the thought process before starting that?
Thought process? I'll let Tammy and Natasha jump in, but I believe it was for our professional development to get our teachers in and ready to go.
Well, one of the things that we find is that our district starts three weeks or so later than most everybody, and while it's not the most important thing, a part of what we do as a district, there is the reality that our students are required to be tested in a certain period of time, and those other districts have a little bit of a head start on us because we start so late. And so, I'm sure Natasha can speak to that a little bit more. But then we also know that now, students are finishing up their testing in the next, you know, few days, they're finishing that up, and if we had our choice, we would much rather have more time at the beginning of the school to get students prepared and ready, not only, again, I know test things are the most important, we have to be cognizant of it, than at the end, when students know that the testing is over and they kind of said, "Yeah, we're done." So, Natasha, what, how do you?
We talked about this before. I think one of the advantages of the buildings being air-conditioned is another benefit we just haven't been able to do before. So, I guess it's a matter of...
May, I'm going to throw one more thing under business operations, just because I know Human Resources is coming up. We did, we have increased custodial coverage at the buildings where the square footage was increased. We felt it was important. We were not keeping up the way that we wanted to keep up. I met with the Board of Health representative this afternoon over at Anderson High School, who was impressed by the way we were making sure things are clean, and we always work with Mr. Stone from the Board of Health at every single facility. But in order for us to keep up with the extra square footage, that was required, so you'll see that.
Well, just to be clear, that's always been in the forecast. In fact, with the added square footage, the plan is to add three. You just added one. Now, the other two are still to come.
Correct, yes.
This calendar has a net incremental one day, correct?
I believe that's what we...
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great.
Thanks, that was great. Too bad there's not as many people to hear it.
I know. It's good.
We'll get the counters on the video and replay it.
Item 11.1 is the social studies course of study. We brought this to you last month, and it's been on review in our office since March 19th. And so, the superintendent recommends that the board approve the social studies course of study as shown in the attachment. And item 11.2, we brought a book to you, Turtles All the Way Down, a couple of months ago, and it's been on review in our department. And at this time, we'd like to recommend that the board approve this supplemental book for, this year, it's going to be specifically used for summer reading in grades 11 through 12. Any questions?
Thank you. Human Resources, Ms. Carnahan.
Item A is retirement. Laura Funachelli is retiring from Anderson High School as a teacher after 14 years with us. Item B would be retirement of some of our classified staff. Deborah Cox, 27 years, para. Jane Scheidler, para, also, 11 years. Karen Sullivan has been with the district for 28 years as a bus driver. Jan Taylor, 32 years, administrative assistant at Mercer. And Fay Wells is retiring after 46 years with the district. She most recently has been the head cook, and she is, at this point in time, the employee with the greatest longevity with the district. So, we wish them the very best in their retirement. Item C, resignations. Item D, a contract termination. And the Ohio Revised Code statute is listed there that goes along with that termination. Item E is an unpaid leave of absence. Item F, incumbences G.I., J.K., M.N.O. Item G, change of assignment. Item H, change of salary. Item I would be appointments, and you can see that that goes on to page four. Item, sorry, I can't read this.
J.
Is it J? Item J, special services appointments, and that goes on over to page seven. Item K, these are the, we're getting close to the end of our year with the supplementals, so we'll begin to see those wind down, but this is supplementals and coaches for 2017-18. Item, at the bottom of that, you see our student teachers and interns. Item L, volunteers. Item M, substitute personnel. Item N would be job descriptions, and I want to draw your attention to the technology, teaching, and learning support specialist and let you know. We talked about this in our HR meeting earlier this week. This is a converted position, and Mr. Meese has been working with Mr. Broadwater, Forward Edge, and they were able to reduce our contract in that particular area, and it will fund the majority of this position, so it is a converted position. Administrative assistant, exempt one receptionist, this would be a central office receptionist. Item O, we are beginning to see our 1819 coaches and advisors and athletic workers. And then, on page 14, you do see our FTE information. And so, if you look at that, you can see that we have increased 1.27, an increase of .27 FTE for a bus driver, and 1.0 increase due to the addition of a custodian, as Mr. Fruman and Mr. Broadwater just spoke of. And so, we are 804.32 FTE. The superintendent recommends the board approve the personnel items as listed.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Carnahan? Student Services, Ms. Ryan.
Student Services has four trips for your approval this evening. Item 13.1 is a trip by Anderson High School, their teacher academy, students, they have eight, and four, Great Oaks teaching teachers, traveling to Orlando for the Educators Rising National Conference, June 20th through the 25th. Costs is included at $446 per student, and they will be traveling by air, and Great Oaks is funding that transportation. Item 13.2 is the same trip, but by Turpin High School, they're sending two students and four chaperones to Orlando for the same national conference at 800 per student, and they have included some additional costs in their request, which is why there is a difference between Anderson's and Turpin's. And there have been significant fundraisers for both of these trips. Item 13.3 is a trip that was provided to you by Mr. Pebbles a couple of weeks ago to give you some upfront information. This is our DECA students, 15 DECA students, just recently traveled to Atlanta, Georgia for the DECA National Conference or competition. This was awarded to them at, between the last board meeting and this evening. They traveled this past weekend, the 21st through the 25th, and there was a $620 cost per student. Transportation was provided by Great Oaks. And the last trip, 13.4, is our Turpin High School cheerleaders. There will be 36 cheerleaders and three coaches traveling to Miami University for their cheerleading camp, August 2nd through the 5th of 2018. Costs is included here, and district transportation will be transporting them. Superintendent is recommending the board approve these overnight trips, items 13.1 to 13.4.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Ryan? Thank you. Technology, item 14, 14.1, Mr. Meese.
Good evening again. So, the first item on the technology agenda is for the purchase of equipment for the E-Rate program. The E-Rate program is a federal program which subsidizes the purchase of equipment and technology in schools and libraries. This contract is for this coming summer. The proposal is to improve the infrastructure at both Anderson and Turpin High School. This will replace all of the network infrastructure as far as the switchgear goes. This will also replace the entire wireless system in both of the buildings for the school district. So, this is going to be a much-needed improvement for both of those buildings. This will improve both the bandwidth internally within the building, the network speed in the building, and the reliability of both the wireless and the internal network infrastructure in the building. Do you have any questions about this?
This is kind of the mead of what you discussed with us. Was it the last meeting or...
It was several, I think it was about three meetings ago. We, Mr. Broadwater and I went over, and we gave a technology proposal.
Oh, I remember that well. This is the cost of what you were talking about, though, implemented from that meeting, right?
Correct. This is the first phase of a three-step program.
Is there actually a separate agreement, and the document that we're approving is really nothing but an agreement that we're appropriating the necessary funds? Is there a separate contract document?
There is not. This is a federal program. Essentially, there's no contracts that are needed for this. It's basically, we spend the money, we're agreeing to spend the money, and the government is going to agree to give us a 40% reimbursement rate on that.
The process includes the 470, 471, does it not?
It does, yes.
Which is an agreement between the parties, and it's online.
Right. We basically, we propose what we're looking for. We post it to a government website. All the entities that are approved have the ability to bid on that, on those services that we're looking for, and then we accept the bid that we're going through to take.
I don't have an issue with what we're doing, because you explained it, as you say, several meetings ago in considerable detail, and I don't have an issue with the cost or the reimbursement. If you guys are fine with how it's getting documented, I mean, we're approving nothing more than an appropriation.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Meese of his issue?
Just to clarify, I think you said in your presentation, when these upgrades are completed, both campuses will be completely Wi-Fi enabled.
Absolutely.
And importantly, we've got the capacity for every student and faculty member to be online at the same time, so for testing and all these other purposes.
With the caveat, remember, it travels at the speed of the slowest device. Did I get that right?
It does, it does. So, but what this will allow us to do, though, this will upgrade our wireless system so that we'll be able to actually relegate who is on and how long they stay on. And so, if we see a problem where there's a slow device that's slowing things down, we can actually take action and kick that device off and allow all the other devices to operate at the optimal speed.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all for putting up with our questions throughout the weekend and the like. I know we, some of us, well, at least Elizabeth and I, I don't know about the rest of you who were a pain in the butt. All right, 14.2.
14.2 is along the same line of vein here. This is the contract with HCCA. This is the entity that provides our internet service, among other things. So, this was a proposal, again, through E-Rate, to increase our bandwidth from... So this was a proposal, again, through E-Rate, to increase our bandwidth from 700 megabytes to 1 gigabyte. I've noticed over time that we're starting to reach our capacity, and this will increase our overall capacity for the district during times of testing and higher times of network needs that we will not overstep our limits. Any questions about either one of those? The superintendent recommends that the board approve the attached consent internet services with Hamilton County Cooperative agreement as shown in the attachment.
Thank you. 15, 15.1, the treasurer's report. Mr. Giuffre.
Thank you. We have donations in total of $13,260.30 for the month, predominantly, well, all monetary donations predominantly between Anderson and Turpin High Schools. Item B, statement of board accounts is the balance with receipts, payments, and ending balance as of March 31st. Items C, D, and E are estimated revenues and estimated expenditures with the actuals year-to-date as of the end of March. Item F is a monthly bank statement. Item G is our investment accounts. Currently this year, we've brought in approximately $726,000 worth of interest in all of our investment accounts. Item H is amendment to appropriations for $1,305,000 predominantly in permanent improvement. And then item I is the board's service fund. With that, I'd like to make a recommendation to consent items 8.1 through 15.1 minus item 10.2 for separate action.
Thank you. Can we have such a motion?
So moved. Second. And thank you for putting all those together.
After nine years of having it...
Thank Genie.
Excellent job.
I would have, yeah. Ready?
All right, Mr. Giuffre.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Mrs. Barber.
Yes.
Ms. Choice.
Yes.
And Mr. Fruman.
Yes. We have a motion on item 10.2.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Giuffre.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Mrs. Barber.
Yes.
Ms. Choice.
Yes.
Mr. Fruman.
Abstain. And then reports to the Board of Education, item 16.1, Business Advisory Committee.
We did not meet. We have another meeting coming up in May.
All right. Item 16.2, the Policy Committee. Mr. Smith.
Okay. Policy Committee met on March 5th, went through quite a number of policies. At least half of them were the typical required changes from the various state legislature or what have you. We had a few of them that were initiated from within the district. I will have to say, I learned more about headlights than I probably ever wanted to. But anyway, that's in there. These were submitted for our first reading and our last meeting, and they're submitted to you for approval at our meeting today. If anybody have any questions or concerns about any of these policies? With that, I would then move that we approve the policies as provided in our agenda and under item 16.2.
Mr. Giuffre.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Choice.
Yes.
Mrs. Barber.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Mr. Fruman.
Yes. Item 16.3 is the Human Resources Committee Report. We met this last, what was it, Tuesday? No, was it Thursday? Thursday. Thursday, April 19th, we met, and went through, really in considerable detail, the HR plans that are in place now, what we're looking at next year in the five-year forecast. I don't think I could even begin to do justice to the kind of detail that Ms. Carnahan and her staff are doing, Mr. Broadwater are doing on HR. It's really, it's really impressive. Nothing happens by accident. They have heat maps that follow the staffing at each of the elementary schools. We're working to make sure that, rather than focusing on necessarily having the same number of staff in each of the elementaries and high schools, we instead focus on the individual needs that exist at each of those schools. And in a way that I don't know that we've ever really done before, the school principals are working together and helping to make sure that, rather than necessarily having equal numbers, they have the right help and the right building at the right time so that the kids are getting the help in the areas they need. I'm not, I'm not going to even come close to doing this justice. If you have questions, I'd send you to Tammy, but what they're doing and the plans they have are well thought out, and I'm glad we have the committee so that Ms. Choice and I can sit down and listen to it all. I wish we could do a better job of describing it to the rest of you. They're doing a nice job.
Well, I'd just like to add that it's so impressive that the principals work so well together at the high schools, like they're willing to share a teacher or whatever it takes to, you know, be good stewards of the district's money. So rather than hire another person, they figure out a way to do it.
Yeah. It's good work.
Good work.
Any questions that I couldn't answer? Item 16.4, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee met March 15th. We don't have a meeting, a next meeting scheduled yet, although I anticipate that we will have one sometime in May.
I'll be in Rome in June if you'd like to meet there.
Okay, well, you know. I'll be in Paris in May, so maybe we can figure out a way to...
Anyway, we'll schedule something for May.
16.5, Curriculum and Student Services. Forrest.
We have not had a meeting.
Item 16.6, Safety Committee. Ms. Barber.
We meet May 21st.
All right, great. 16.7, the Forest Hills Foundation. Randy, are you presenting that?
Looks like I am. I thought Dee...
Oh, there she is. I didn't see you.
Holy cow, man.
I didn't see you. Let me introduce Dee Stone, the Executive Director of the Forest Hills Foundation for Education.
I didn't see you either, Dee.
I did.
She's a foreigner. Good evening. Okay, I'm going to make this really quick. The Forest Hills Foundation for Education Board met on April 11th. We're discussing doing a strategic plan. We actually voted to go ahead with a strategic plan. It's a more limited plan than we originally talked about, but it's something we can get done in the window that we had available. Our goals are to build our brand, collaboration with other community groups, succession planning, and to get our first $100,000 donor. That's my big goal. We're also updating our website, and we have a new, as you all know, new administrative assistant, so we have more increased activity on social media. So if you haven't already done so, like us on Facebook, follow us on Twitter, or follow us on Instagram, it's @FHTFORG. Our event's coming up, Forest Hills 5K, May 12th. Get registered. The golf outing, community golf outing, is July 20th. It's a Friday night. This year, it's nine holes. It's in the evening. It's going to be not so hot and way quicker in May, way more fun, I've decided. So, anyway, nine holes, and then the Swarve for Success, the save the date on that is September 29th, and it will be at the Anderson Center. It's already booked, so that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
16.8, Legislative Liaison. Randy.
Actually, in the interest of time, I will truncate my report. The most important thing was the resolution on House Bill 512. There are a couple of other things coming down the pike, but neither of the education committees were meeting this past week anyway, so...
May I ask, do you need a certified copy of that resolution sent to OSBA?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
16.9, Forest Hills Teachers Association's report. Ms. Lawver could not be here, but she did send me an email. She says their contract created a district advisory board, and each building has its own building advisory committee. Training has taken place. They're working to create a better flow and process for reporting. They're happy with the startup, but still working on communication. The district team collaborates well and is aware of the need to streamline the process for working on shared solutions and issues. The association also participated in the Southwest Ohio Education Weekend Event in Hamilton, Ohio. They'll be sending two delegates to Columbus on May 11th for the State Representative Assembly. And the FHTA supported the April 20th, 2008 Day of Action here in Forest Hills and promoted the issue of stopping gun violence on a national level. She encourages the board to open dialogue with FHTA to discuss school safety at a larger scale. So thank you, Ms. Lawver. And before we move into executive session, we will have our next meeting when? Is it May 21? I don't see it. Oh, here it is. Yeah, next meeting's May 21st, 7:00 PM here. Can we have a motion for executive session?
Pursuant to Higher Revised Code, Section 121.22G1, I hereby move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of considering the employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation of a public employee or official. And pursuant to Higher Revised Code, Section 121.22G2, I hereby move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of considering the purchase of property for public purposes or sale of property at competitive bidding, since disclosure at this time would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to persons whose personal, private interests are adverse to the general public interest.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Giuffre.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Ms. Choice.
Yes.
Mrs. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Fruman.
Yes. We do not anticipate taking action after executive session. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening, for staying for the duration. Good night.